That one's good.
I'm going to sign all eight two pages again.
Yep, I called her the same evening. It's like three days ago.
All right, good evening, folks. It's 5:30. I'm going to call this regular meeting to order, June 6, 2024. Will you all please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
As part of allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please.
Alderman Hoffman.
Here.
Alderman Rucker.
Here.
Alderman Osteen. Alderman Ross.
Here.
Alderman Barilla.
Here.
Alderman Moro.
Here.
Mayor Harmison.
Here.
All right, we're going to start off with the citizens' communication. This is the time set aside on the agenda for citizens and visitors to address the mayor and the board on any topic that is not a public hearing. For those here in person, speakers will be restricted to three minutes unless otherwise permitted. Minutes may not be donated or transferred from one speaker to another. Any questions or comments for the mayor and the board may be sent to the city clerk at T B E R R E T H at OsageBeach.org no later than 10:00 a.m. on the board meeting day, the first and third Thursday of each month. Submitted questions and comments may be read during the citizens' communications section of the agenda. The Board of Aldermen will not take any action on any item not listed on the agenda, nor will respond to questions, although staff may be directed to respond at a later time. The mayor and the board welcome and value input and feedback from the public. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to address the board? All right, seeing none, we're going to move it on to the approval of consent agenda. Has the board had a chance to review the minutes from the May 9, 2024 special meeting, May 16, 2024 meeting, and May 22, 2024 meeting, as well as review the bill list and the new liquor license? Is that all in place, Alderman Hoffman?
I believe so. Now, we had a little problem with Adobe. Everything good, Tara?
Yes.
Then, yes, sir.
Any comments or questions on any of the consent agenda items? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Rucker, do I have a second? Alderman Moro, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, the consent agenda has been approved.
If I may take just a moment, I just want to let everybody know. I'm dealing with a back issue. If all of a sudden I decide to stand up, it's because I got a little spasm, and I might be standing back here. But right now, I'm good, comfortable, so I just want to let everybody know.
So you're saying this meeting might be shorter than normal?
I still have some things I want to say, as long as I'm comfortable.
Gina, kick the chair every now and then.
All right, we're going to, we only have one item, unfinished business tonight's Bill 24-34, an ordinance to the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to sign a contract with Logan Escavating LLC for Osage Beach Road Improvement Project for an amount not to exceed $1,093,287.80. Assistant City Administrator, Mike Welty, please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. I have nothing to add unless there's any questions.
All right, anybody from the board, any comments or questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the second reading?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Ross, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Hoffman, roll call, please.
Alderman Moro.
Yes.
Alderman Barilla.
Yes.
Alderman Ross.
Yes.
Alderman Rucker.
Yes.
Alderman Hoffman.
Yes.
Alderman Osteen.
All right, second reading has passed. First item of business, new business, we have Bill 24-35. It's an ordinance to the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to sign a contract with Capital Paving and Construction for Osage Beach Parkway Extension Project for a amount not to exceed $498,284.30. This is the first reading. Assistant City Administrator, Mike Welty.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. This project's been a long time coming. I know we've, we started this, I think, four, something like four years ago, maybe longer. But we're finally to the point where we're going to award a contract on this. We did open bids in mid-March. I'm sorry, bids were advertised in mid-March. We opened them on April 23. The low bid here is from Capital Paving and Construction for $498,284.30. The project budget here was just over $600,000, but that also included the engineering for the project as well. We're kind of doing this concurrent to the MoDOT process, so while I don't think there's going to be any problems, there always could be something that happens on the MoDOT side that might hold this up a little bit more. But if, if everything goes smoothly, we should have this project under construction in July. Let's see here. The one thing I do want to point out is the Osage Beach Special Road District originally provided $100,000 towards this project. And at the end of 2023, they decided to add an additional $100,000 towards this project. I think that's really important that the board knows that because they're, they're obviously invested in getting this project done as well. I've kind of broke out all the project costs and all of the contributions there. We have worked with Capital Paving several times in the past. Most recently, they did the big asphalt paving job we had last summer, which included Bluff Drive. So, any questions? I recommend approval.
All right, thank you. Comments from the board, Alderman Hoffman?
I was just wondering, how many bids did we have total?
How many bids do we have total? Five.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions from the board? Alderman Ross?
So, Mike, I appreciate the fact that we expect to get it done before Bike Fest, but I'm not sure that it'll matter. But if we don't get it done before Bike Fest, what risk do we have around the Harley-Davidson area for traffic?
If we don't get it done before Bike Fest, the contractors are already aware they're going to, you know, kind of push everything to one corner of that field and try and stay out of the way so that the business owner over there at Harley-Davidson can use the field as he normally would, as far as...
He uses it. I don't go over there as much.
Yeah, yeah, so, 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 sorry, sir, but that's where they do, like, overflow parking.
Okay.
Is in that field, right there across the street from Lazy Days, from Harley-Davidson. And so, we've assured him that if, for some reason, and it will be tight, if for some reason they don't get done, we'll just move everything out of the way so he can still use it. So, shouldn't be a problem there. That's all I have.
All right. Alderman Rucker?
Who's doing the construction review or overview? Is that going to be the same engineering firm we're using now or somebody else?
No, it's formerly Anderson Engineering. I think they've changed their name to We Are Own Engineering now. That's who we have the contract with to do the inspection. Now, because this is a MoDOT project, MoDOT inspectors will also be on-site regularly as well.
So, they're just be doing the inspection of it?
Correct.
All right, anybody else? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve first reading? Alderman Moro, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Ross, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, first reading passes. All right, next we have Bill 24-36. It's an ordinance to the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, approving an extension of time to acquire certain property under the redevelopment agreement between the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, and Lakeport Village LLC. First reading, City Attorney Cole Bradbury, please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. As you're certainly all familiar by now, the redevelopment agreement with Takeitoff Development for the Oasis does provide a deadline for the developer to acquire the Lakeport Village time shares. That deadline is currently set for June 30, the end of this month. We've been in contact with the developer's team, including their attorneys. We have one of them, Katie Jenner, on Microsoft Teams with us tonight. The, in the past, we've done a six-month extension that got us to today. The developer continues to make steady progress. We've been in communication with their team. They've kind of shared some of their plans, and they, they do have an end game in sight. But for now, they have requested an additional three-month extension, which would push this out to September 30. This, well, the city, you know, keep tabs on it, but we're optimistic that we're going to have some good news here before too long, and therefore, staff recommends approval.
All right, comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve first reading?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Rucker, do I have a second? Alderman Barilla, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, first reading passed. Next, we have Bill 24-37, an ordinance to the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, to allow the mayor to sign a contract with Lucky 8 TV LLC for an access agreement. We are doing the first and second reading tonight. They do have me as the presenter. I'm going to turn it over to Cole here in a second, but we do have a representative from Lucky 8 TV here tonight, and a pretty exciting project. So, we've been talking about this quite a while, and so I'm going to let, turn this over to Cole Bradbury right now.
Well, I'm going to invite Alicia up to, in a minute, to better explain the what. But this is briefly an agreement with Lucky 8 TV. Does not spend any city dollars, does not commit any city resources. But this will allow Lucky 8 TV to feature the Osage Beach Police Department and its officers in a TV show tentatively set for a major national cable linear TV network. Apologies for getting this onto the agenda late. Tara and I, I thought Tara had it, Tara thought I had it, and then we just dropped the ball on it. And but this is, the, the reason for the first and second reading is that to accommodate Lucky 8's shooting schedule, they'd like to be on the ground here shortly and shooting for the July 4 weekend here at the lake. We had a very pleasant meeting with them a few weeks ago, probably a month ago now, and I'll let Alicia kind of explain more of the feel behind it. But this is an experienced TV producer that's produced for Netflix, A&E, and a couple of other networks, I believe. It's, this is not COPS, if you remember. That's what I remember from my childhood. This is much more of a show-the-human side of policing, show the, the family-friendly parts of it, as well as the folks who come down and have just a little too much fun at night. So, with that, I ask Alicia to come up and give us a better explanation, do it better justice than I did.
I'm not sure I can, actually, Cole. That was very good. I might have to hire you. Are there, is there a clicker? Hi, everyone. Nice to meet you. My name's Alicia Green. I just flew in from Washington, DC. And as Cole set up, I'm with a company called Lucky 8. And we are hoping that the contract that we have tentatively in place with the mayor and your chief and Cole will be signed off by all of you at some point after I tell you a little bit more about this project. And I was, as I was driving up here, thinking about what to say to y'all to explain the kind of work that we do, it occurred to me that you're obviously the "show-me" state, and I happen to be born in the "show-me" state, so it seemed like we all are on the same page, and I might as well show you and not tell you. If I were in your shoes, ooh, I'd be asking, who are you people and what do you want? Lucky 8 is a production company based in Stamford, Connecticut, but really, we are based everywhere. We're based on Zoom because, thanks to the pandemic. The founding partners are in Connecticut, New Jersey, Florida, and New York. So, we are everywhere. I run, I work on a special team called Special Access, and my colleagues are in Minnesota, Virginia, and Brooklyn. So, we really are everywhere. And some of the programming you do that Cole mentioned is for networks like the National Geographic Channel, the Smithsonian Channel, A&E, Netflix, and History. These are a handful of the places that we have worked over the years. So, who is Lucky 8? Actually, we all started out mostly at PBS and National Geographic Television. And I tell you that because we do not make TV for TV's sake. We make TV with a point and a purpose. And some of the programming we've done is featured here. Unlocked is a show that was recently number one on Netflix. And I said there's a point and a purpose to the shows we do, so let me dive into that a little bit more. The premise behind Unlocked, because we do a lot of work in the corrections and law enforcement space, is, you know, the old adage, what if you let the inmates run the place? That is, in fact, what we did with the sheriff in Little Rock, Arkansas. His inmates were locked down 23 hours a day, but they were not maximum security inmates. And he wanted to be able to give them more freedom, but because of understaffing and corrections across the country, he was not able to. So, we worked with him for months to figure out a way to unlock one pod. And there were a few days there where we thought things were not going to work out, and it was going to be a very short production. But in the end, what happened? Well, I'm going to let you tune in and see what happened. Were the inmates able to run the place? We do another series, one of our longest-running series is called 60 Days In. Anybody familiar? The premise there is, what is it like to be in jail? We send seven people into a jail. They're innocent, and they are essentially plants for the sheriff to help reveal problems that are inside those jails. To Catch a Smuggler is on National Geographic. We're embedded with Customs Border Patrol at airports across the country. And Booked First Day In is on A&E, and that is about what it's like to be arrested, because the premise behind that is, everybody has a bad day, what happens? And we take a law enforcement perspective at intake units across the country. So, you'll hear a theme here, and that is special access. And that is what we focus on, and that is what we love to do. These are some of the people that we've worked with. Right now, some of my colleagues are with the United States Marine Corps. We're working with NTSB, DoD, Homeland Security, Corrections Sheriffs, and Corrections Departments and Sheriff's Departments across the country. So, if I were you, I'd also be asking, all right, Lucky 8, what do y'all want? We want to be able to embed with your police department, along with Lake Ozark PD, and work with surrounding police departments this summer, to show the big problems that come to a small town and how you manage it from a police department and from a police officer perspective. And so, how do you go from the lake you guys know to the lake that I don't know? And from a quiet sunset, which is why I like coming here, to not-so-quiet sunsets. Again, from a police perspective. The tentative title is Ozark Law. We've gotten some feedback that we need to get "lake" in there, so we are going to bring that to the network and talk to them about that. I'll let you guys duke it out with A&E. But to give you a little bit of a deeper dive into this show, really, the key is over the shoulder of a police officer. So, we are using the officer's own words to describe what's happening. And these are two series that we do that you can easily YouTube or Google to see what I mean by that. Catch a Smuggler, over the shoulder of Customs Border Patrol, Booked, over the shoulder of intake units in sheriff's offices and intake units across the country. And why should you trust us? Because we're the media, right? I'm from Washington, DC, colleagues from New York. If my boss, Greg, were here, he would say you should not trust us, that you should allow us to earn your trust over this summer. I have been talking to the chief here and in Lake Ozark, and chiefs all around the lake for the past few months, and hopefully, I'm starting to earn some trust, because I wouldn't be staying in here if I wasn't. But also, this is me, about nine years old, mile marker 57, where I came as a little kid to the Lake of the Ozarks. We've been coming here for about four generations, and I bring my kids here every summer. So, I come here for professional reasons, but I have very close personal ties to the lake. And I hope that if you ever have any concerns, you call me, and I will give you my boss's direct lumber. So, any questions, comments? I am here to answer them.
All right, thank you, Alicia. Comments from the board, questions? Alderman Hoffman?
I have several.
Yeah, do it.
One, you said the premise is Ozark Law, so this is a law-based show. Reality or documentary style?
Documentary style. We do not do reality.
Okay, that's good to hear. Is, so you're Lucky 8's production company, I assume?
That's correct, yeah.
So, is A&E your distributor?
That's correct.
And is there any variance in that, that it could move to a different distribution company?
No, there is no chance that they could move. It's just not how the business works.
Okay, so...
And if I can add to that, there's a non-assignability provision. So, what we're giving Lucky 8 the right to do, they cannot send somebody else in to do for them.
Okay. So, really, just my last one then. And when I, when I read this in here, it says, we have the right to proof it. Do we have editorial control?
We do, A&E does not give editorial control to anyone. So, the agreement that we have in place, the access agreement that you guys have in front of you, would allow a review of the footage. So, we do not put anything on the air without you guys, your appointee...
Consent.
Yeah, watching every frame of footage. So, you have review rights, but not editorial rights.
But if we don't want something in there, we have the ability to stop it. Is that correct?
Not quite. And so, that was something that Johnny, their attorney, and I hashed out back and forth through several drafts, and got to a point where I'm comfortable. If we have editorial control, that creates some legal issues for them. It actually also creates some legal issues for us as far as, you know, ownership of the, of the film, of the, of the property. There are, this is definitely a give-and-take. They've made very clear commitments to us to, that they're not going to burn us, that this, the purpose of this is to show us in a accurate and positive light. They're not here to, this isn't COPS. Do we have editorial control? No, we are not the producer. So, could, so could something negative go on? Yes, but we will, we will know about it. We will see it. We will be able to object. We will not, and the, the standard we settled on is as long as it depicts the event accurately. So, we will, there will not be any false light, any, any negative spin for the city.
Okay, then my question to you, Cole, is how does that make you comfortable? Because that doesn't make me comfortable. And that if something, we, if something is there, we can review it, but we can't say no?
Chief and I discussed it, and chief was comfortable with it. And, I mean, I asked for editorial control, and they said that, that's something that they simply cannot do. That was, that was my first request.
I can give you some examples. So, for example, on 60 Days, or maybe it was Booked. On Booked, one of the sheriffs was upset that his deputies were cursing up a storm, so, upon the review. And so, we went through afterwards, and we sort of, you know, talked it out the way you do on any creative process. And we went through and ended up silencing all of the swear words, not beeping them, so that his officers or his deputies were depicted in the way that he wanted them to be depicted. And so, I would say that, you know, we get access to these places, and often, we come, we come, always, we come back to places to film again. We come in, and we are guests in your house, and we want to be invited back. So, let's say that Ozarks is a hit, and we want to go on to a season two. It is in our best interest for everybody to, to work together and be in agreement and be hap, not happy with, be satisfied with the story that airs.
Well, I, because you support it, and the chief supports it, I'm going to support it tonight, but I want to, I want to have a meeting with you later and review it, if you don't mind, please.
Of course.
Okay. All right, Alderman Moro.
What other cities have you been involved with in doing this type of thing?
Yeah, so this is, we've been in many, many cities, as far as following police officers specifically, is that what you mean? Or just cities in general have we filmed? Which, which is your question?
I just wanted to know, as far as on record, a recommendation that...
Oh, sure.
You know, have references to.
Yes, absolutely. We are happy to connect you with the warden of, and the Department of Corrections in a few different states. We can pass that along. And we can also pass along sheriff's departments that we've worked with that are happy to describe what it's like to film with us. And they will not, they won't, they won't sugarcoat it. They'll tell you the whole truth.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
Alderman Ross?
Have we taken any time to reach out to any of those chiefs to get comfortable?
No, not yet.
Okay, well, I'd hope that we would.
Any other comments or questions? Alderman Hoffman?
Does this need to be a first and second reading tonight?
Yes, sir.
Why?
Because they want to start production.
Well, I wonder, well, we'd like to review the material. And, and look, this is nothing towards you or your company. I have reviewed your company. It looks like you guys are pretty solid. But we have a bit of a track record here with reality TV and outside production companies, distribution companies, saying one thing and then doing another. And I think that it should fall on us to make sure that we do our due diligence before we just do this. That's, again, nothing personal towards you or your company. I know production is always tight. You're probably, are you already in pre-production?
That is correct. You know the business well.
Do you have your film team down here already?
We are getting ready to fly them in, because we, in order to capture the events of the summer, summer's already started, right? Memorial Day was the kickoff. So, it's a fast-moving train, and A&E has wanted to work in this area for a while. And so, we'd love to get people here end of June and start filming then. So, yeah, things would have to move very quickly, which is why we discussed first and second readings.
And you have everything in line, like IATSE and Transpo and...
Yes, sir, we sure do.
It's all coming out of St. Louis, I assume?
No, we're...
Atlanta, LA?
The crews, the crews that we work with are based everywhere, because everyone's remote now. So, we have this, we have, we use the, a regular group of showrunners and EPs. I was just on the phone with them in the parking lot about 20 minutes ago, getting things together and finding housing and nailing down things like that. So, really, it's, you know, if you were doing any job, you'd want a little bit of lead time, right? So, that's what, that's why we're asking for this tonight. But I totally get that it's rushed, and we apologize for that. It's just the nature of production nowadays, I'm afraid.
Well, and I'll say this, and we talked several weeks ago when we did the, what did, the, the bridge for the, for the No Toll Bridge. And, you know, Lake Ozark is on board. And I told her that I think this is great. It will promote our city. They're a proven company. We have the city attorney. We have the chief that says this is great. Your mayor, me personally, thinks it's great. They're going to come down here, and we do have the ability to maybe not have total edit control, but like she says, we, we can negotiate back and forth to come up to, that suits us both well. The summer's here, and they need to start producing. My understanding is they're going to go through Bike Fest. I'd even suggested, I said, I know nothing about this business, but I thought it'd be very neat if they did a time-lapse photography of the Oasis being built. And for season one, they can see it built. And then next year, you have 500,000 people at the Oasis. And they're here to stay. And I don't want to see this opportunity go by the wayside. Obviously, they're successful. And we can call a bunch of people and say, what, how did they go? How did you work with them? But you're talking about another month, it probably wouldn't happen. And Lake Ozark is on board, and I think it's just a perfect fit for our community. I'll just say that. Alderman Ross?
So, I apologize. I don't have the revised, look at the agreement. So, here's the question. You said earn your trust.
Yeah.
So, we're 20 days into this thing, and we're not feeling the love. Can we get out?
I'd have to go, honestly, I did, we did this all three weeks ago, and I don't have that answer off the top of my head.
He never forced you to film with us. And I'm pretty sure the chief wouldn't let me do that anyway.
So, I have no problem giving, the, the, you know, the thing I'd love to see is, this is a wonderful program and sheds a great light. You know, there were a lot of naysayers when the film Ozark came out, and it turned out to be great for us, okay, in my mind, at least. Some people may disagree. And, and I would love nothing better than for something like this to have that same success. But I also like to have options. So, anyway, that was just a question. I don't know that we can answer that right now.
I will, I'll try to find you the answer really quick, if I can.
And I will say that the mayor brings up a good point, which is that we're not just here to follow, you know, we could follow police officers anywhere. So, why are we in the Lake of the Ozarks? Because you guys are at this really interesting intersection, where, you know, that's why I showed you those pictures of the quiet versus the loud, of the old versus the new, right? There are a lot of issues facing your city and your community because of the, because of the shows and the media attention you've gotten, positive and negative. And so, I, I would say that this is, this is an opportunity to, to give your point of view.
And we're about, we're bringing tourism down, economic development down here. That's just one more thing that people are going to see when they're sitting in California and New York, and what is this Lake of the Ozarks thing? And they'll, they'll start coming. I don't want to see this missed opportunity. Alderman Hoffman?
I'm just not a fan of it being first and second reading. I'd like to have two weeks to, to look into it. So, that's just where I'm at. Again, I did review the company. I did ask around through the production people I know. They did get good reviews. But I just don't think we need to rush it. I mean, they got to move production back two weeks to do this, and they got to move production back two weeks. I mean, we've still got an entire summer. So, we've got Fourth of July, Bike Fest, everything out there. And honestly, the two weeks we're pushing back is Father's Day weekend, which is the slowest weekend at the lake, and one other weekend. I just, I just don't think we need to rush it. But just my two cents right there.
Any other comments or questions? Alderman Rucker?
I fully support this. I realize that we're, I'm not as comfortable, I'm not as uncomfortable with two readings as Alderman Hoffman is. But I, I believe and trust in our counsel and, and our chief. And, and you know, if push gets a shove, and a number of weeks or months go down the road, and some things go bad, you know what? None of our police officers are available for those, for those folks to ride in the car. We just tell them no. And if the company doesn't like it, they can sue us. I mean, if we run into something that bad, we just pull the plug and let them come after us. I don't have that concern. I'm not worried about it. But that, to me, is the, is my way out. So, I fully support it, and, and I do understand the one first and second reading concern, but in this situation, I, I would support it.
And if I may piggyback or something off that, which kind of answers Alderman Ross's question, the agreement requires us to authorize but not require our department to allow them to ride along. So, if an officer... So if an officer doesn't want a camera in his car, he does not have to. And if the officers are not, as you said, feeling the love, they are not required to reciprocate.
Good. To kind of to Alderman Rucker's point.
Any other comments or questions? Alderman Hoffman.
Just to, back to Alderman Rucker, they're called dailies, so you'll see the footage that they film, but then what you see six months later on television may not be anything remotely close to what you proved that night. So when you say, oh, well, I saw it, and everything's looking great, let's keep working with them, that doesn't mean that that's necessarily the footage that's going to get used. So you can't make that decision or that determination as they're filming. That's.
Alderman Rucker.
That was not what I was going down the road with. What I was going down the road with is your specific concern that I thought in reference to us not following up with any of their references. So in my opinion, we give it the first and second reading, pass it. We ask our council, and we ask our chief to do some more due diligence and make contact with these references, which I'm sure we will get a lot of okay, okay. And if we don't, that's when they can come back, and we can take whatever ethical reasons or non-ethical reasons we feel we need to do, depending on how severe the issue may be, and pulling the plug. That's my, that's my, where I feel comfortable with moving forward.
And if I can address your concern about the switcheroo, the department review process specifically provides that we will get a near final version of the applicable episode. So it's not, we're not reviewing all footage. We're getting a near final. Now, it's a, it's a tight timeline. Chief and I are going to be looking at stuff on short notice, but we're supposed to be getting a post-production or near post-production.
Exactly. And the review process that we have in place is similar with law enforcement across the country, which is that my boss comes personally here, reviews with your designees, goes through frame by frame, whatever issues come up, you discuss them, and that happens multiple times. So dailies, I appreciate your knowledge of it and explaining that, but it's beyond dailies. It's definitely the versions, the rough cut, fine cut, picture lock.
Alderman Burrella, did you have something?
Well, I was just going to say, I think that if it was reality-based, it would be a no for me. With it being a documentary base, you know, and Chief's on board and our attorney's on board, I think I would support it.
Any other comments or questions?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, second reading, same bill, Bill 24-37, Orders to the City of Ossage Beach, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to sign a contract with Lucky Eight TV LLC for access agreement. Anybody else come up with anything in the last couple of seconds? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve second reading? Alderman Burrella, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Ross, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Hoffman.
That's you, Ty.
That's me, I was trying to name it first. Alderman Hoffman.
Yes.
Alderman Rucker?
Yes.
Alderman Osteen? Alderman Ross?
Yes.
Alderman Burrella?
Yes.
Alderman Ross?
Yes.
All right, second reading passes. Happy about this, so good luck. Look forward to working with you all. All right, next, we have a motion to approve the sale of city surplus from multiple departments. Assistant City Administrator Mike Welty, please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. This is our first surplus sale of the year. Everything is listed out there. I do recommend approval. We will be selling everything on Purple Wave.
Very good. Comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Hoffman, do I have a second? Alderman Ross, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve. Next, we have a motion to approve the purchase of new computer equipment from Forward Slash Technologies for an amount not to exceed $85,675.48. IT Manager Michael Bean, please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. We went out to bid in early April, opened the packets in early May for this tech refresh. Only ended up having one bid.
Michael, can you pull the microphone closer to you, please?
Only ended up having one bid total, which was from Forward Slash Technologies for $85,675, which is under budget, was a budgeted item, and I do recommend approval.
All right, comments or questions from the board? Alderman Ross.
So did we take a look at like what Dell or anyone else prices these at?
This is a Dell cooperative bid. Them being a business partner, they go out, they get, they retrieve the quote directly from Dell. So they end up getting it cheaper than we could by being a business partner.
Okay, so my question is, did we go out and look at Dell for the same product and realize that we're saving money?
That is correct. We initially got bids that we put our initial quote on, but we thought we would come in, and that's how we came to you last year at 90,000, 92,000. Forward Slash ended up coming in $7,000 under what the Dell preliminary quote was last year.
Okay, now I understand what you're saying. Thank you, that's all I have.
Anybody else? Alderman Burrella.
I was, I actually looked at a few of the things on there and looked them up, and straight from Dell, found the prices to be cheaper. So I was going to ask if they included, if they were more because they included installation and support or those type of things. But just, just from what I looked up.
I'd be happy to sit with you and spec it out line by line, but I can assure you that exactly what we went out to bid and asked them to do is cheaper than what we went through with Dell, so.
Any otherbody, anybody else? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Rucker, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Hoffman, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Next, we have a motion to approve the purchase of equipment to set up three new police vehicles from Turnkey Mobile for an amount not to exceed $35,000. Chief Davis, please.
Mayor, members of the board, this is a request, purchase the equipment to set up our three new patrol cars, two regular patrol cars, one K-9 vehicle. After reviewing the bids, or we received bids from three different vendors, after reviewing the bids, I recommend purchasing the equipment from Turnkey Mobile out of Jeff City. We've had several years' experience with Turnkey and never had any major issues with them. Again, this is just for the purchase of equipment only. We'll still have additional funds that come in for the actual installation that we'll be using, our vendor that we've used the past several years. Turnkey, Ed Rohr, or Turnkey and EnRoute also included in their quotes. Installation, however, our vendors still can do it significantly cheaper than them. So Police Department recommends approval.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. Comments, questions from the board? Alderman Rucker.
Well, with this bid and then what your projected installation, then are we going to be under budget?
Yes, we should have approximately 10,000 left or under budget.
That's all I have.
All right, anybody else? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Ross, do I have a second? Alderman Ross, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. Last item of bid under unfinished business is a motion to approve the appointment.
New business, sir.
I'm sorry, under new bid, what did I say?
Unfinished.
All right, sorry. Motion to approve the appointment of Jeffrey Hooker, a city administrator for the City of Ossage Beach. And we do have Mr. Hooker and a crowd out here. And for those of you, just kind of tell you how this went, and I know we had a session with the board here a week or so ago, and Gina's leaving us, and so.
It's getting more and more irrelevant.
So we put out, you know, people to apply for the job. We had a lot of applicants. We had a lot of applicants.
Over 36.
I think it was 39 was the number, I believe. And as you know, the way the city ordinance reads, it's an appointment by the mayor with the advice and approval of the board. And so what I did was I brought on Alderman Rucker, longest-serving member of the board, and Alderman Ross, who's the president of our board. And so the three of us, I dwindled it down to four applicants, and it's amazing what you can find when you Google people's names and look at Facebook and do some stalking. But we had a lot of qualified applicants, we really did. And the four, we interviewed them, and we sat in a room, and then we did some talking. And so I was very proud to pick Mr. Hooker. And in our meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago, we kind of went through this more in detail, but I just kind of wanted to give everybody out there how the process works and how it worked this time. Tentatively, if we approved this, he would start on July 15th, and he would work with Gina that week. We're going to have a planning session that week, we're going to have a staff meeting that week, and then Gina would take off from there and enjoy a few weeks before officially being done and be on call for any questions he had. But then Mr. Hooker could come in here and do his thing, and I think this is going to be good for the city as much as we're going to see Gina move on, going to miss what she has done for us. Things change, and it'll be a new direction for the city, but I do think it'll be a good appointment. So with that being said, do you have any comments or questions about this motion? Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Rucker, do I have a second? Excuse me, Alderman Ross, do I have a second? Alderman Burrella, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Hooker.
Welcome.
Welcome. All right, next, we're going to move on to staff communications. We'll start with the city administrator, Gina Woods, please.
Yes, Mayor, members of the board. I don't have any further updates on the department list, but a couple, a couple of things for the end of the month. The next meeting, July, or June 20th, will be the scheduled public hearing that we noticed up last month for the water and sewer rates. We'll have the first reading as well, so a public hearing, first reading of those will be on the next agenda. I will not be at the next agenda, so Mike will be handling that for me. Ultimately, I'll be on vacation the 13th, pretty much to the end of the month, already prescheduled before all this change. So not that I'm counting my business days, but I'm almost down to the teens. But anyway, I will be on vacation 13th, relatively through the last of the month. There's a couple of days at the end of the month, I'll be, I'll be back. Mike Welty will be acting in my place as usual when I take this normal June vacation. Other than that, I attended my last MML event today and did a budget workshop or a budget presentation for them, and I might just share it with you in case, you know, you'll be tired of hearing me about budget, so. Anyway, other than that, that's all I have.
All right, thank you very much. Assistant City Administrator Mike Welty, please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. I just want to remind the board that we do have design guidelines going through planning and zoning on this coming Tuesday. After we got done with the forum that we had a few meetings ago, we took a lot of that information, made a few changes. We have created the list that Alderman Osteen wanted me to create, which is a list of everything that we deleted. We've included that as well. So all of that's going to be going through P and Z, and then expect to see it in front of you guys in July. So that's all I have.
All right, thank you very much. All right, Tara City Clerk, you have anything?
Oh, I went to elected officials training today and attended the shortest budget workshop ever. It was 45 minutes. It was pretty awesome. But yeah, so I did that today, and I'll be back. They said talk fast. And then I'm going to be back there again tomorrow, and remember, I need to talk to you after that about strategic planning, too. Sorry, but yes, I got that, too.
Perfect.
Okay, but no, that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. City Treasurer, Carrie Bell.
Mayor, board of Alderman, I did receive the draft audit for the 2023.
Microphone. Microphone.
Thank you. I received the draft audit from the auditors. Okay. And I've got a few days here to wrap it up and put in my comments and my pieces and parts and return that back to them. It should be final before the end of the month, and tentative presentation will be the first meeting in July.
Very good. Thank you. City Attorney, Cole Bradbury.
Mayor, members of the board, I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
All right.
Chief Davis? Like to congratulate Corporal Starnes on 10 years of service with the city this month. So she'll be getting her certificate and such when we can meet up. She's on night shift, so we're kind of passing. And we've got one officer in background, and should be sending that out to, over to HR to do a offer letter, and that will put us at full staff without the school resource officer.
Excellent.
We'll be basically one short.
Very good. How's 911?
911, we're still five short, I believe. We have one in training, and that's kind of where we're at right now.
We did have one dispatch officer who retired recently, and she is staying on part-time.
Okay. Very good.
For temporary.
Building official, Ron White.
I have nothing to report this week.
Parks and Rec, Kerry Gregory.
Yeah, Parks team have been extremely busy, extremely busy, staying on top of prepping fields and maintaining the park right in the middle of Little League and slow pitch softball season and back-to-back weekend tournaments. But we're surviving. I would like to introduce our new recreation specialist, Patience Aronall. This is her first week. We are extremely happy to have her here. She has jumped in and already setting fields, and just an avalanche of information that we're throwing at her. And so Patience recently graduated from college with a Parks and Recreation degree and had an internship with the Columbia Parks and Rec Department. And so right out of the gate, graduated from college, moved to a new town, started a new career. So welcome, Patience.
Welcome.
Well, welcome. You picked a great town. All right, Public Works, Zach Wilber.
Thank you. Just want to congratulate Spencer Liveire. He was the first quarter employee of the quarter, so congratulations to him. It was very well deserved. He's working hard.
Thank you much. Ty, do you have anything for Airport?
We need more seats, but Ron's working on that for our little session down here.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. Service awards, you just reminded me. Most of you know Leonard Shelton that works at Grand Glaze Airport. June 1st was his 25th year with the city.
Wow.
The caveat to that is it's only 25 years because that's how long the city has operated Grand Glaze Airport. He actually started working there in the mid-'80s. So he's been an employee at the City of Grand Glaze for close to 40 years now. So thank you, Leonard.
Absolutely. Good, that's awesome. Human Resource, Michael Ray.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. I was going to congratulate Spencer Liveire. He's a sewer tech in our Public Works Department for being Employee of the Quarter, first quarter. Aside from that, I have no other updates.
All right, thank you. Cochran Engineering, Eric? Nothing? All right.[1670.15] IT, Michael Bean.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. I just want to welcome Travis Jenkins. He's not here. He's our new IT specialist. He's a retired Air Force and recent Mizzou grad. I'm sure if you guys have any IT needs, he's happy to help, and he's a great addition. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, Kerry Patterson.
Yeah, just a reminder for the board that the Planning Commission meetings are online on Facebook, so when the design guideline goes to them, you can watch it on Facebook, so you can have a little catch-up on what's going on. And then, of course, we'll bring a full recommendation to the Board of Aldermen from Planning Commission on what their view is on those changes. So that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you much. Alderman Rucker, you made it.
Yep.
All right.
I scooted up as close as I can to the mic. I had a couple of things. First of all, Zach, Tell Street Department, great job with the street sweeper. My wife's out there saying, do you want to see what's going on? She said, look at how clean the street is and everything. So, good job. On the downside, we need our name on there. She says, is that the city's? I said, oh, yeah, that's one we, yeah, it is, but we need to let everybody know it's our street sweeper, not some contractor who made a mess or whatever. So, but, good job. Again, tell Spencer, great, congratulations on being the Employee of the Month. And I don't know if the board has had any opportunity to start looking through the community survey report. I've started very little, just kind of cursored a little bit of it. There's a lot of information in there. At this point, the format, there's a lot of pluses that I see. I like the idea that they're giving us answers on the citizens and then our part-time citizens or part-time people or however you want to break those categories between business and non-business. So I've just looked at a lot of it, and I think there's a lot of good valuable information in there. There's some that, I'm sorry, folks, we can't take the big votes and tell them they're not allowed here anymore. You know, somebody wanted to get rid of that.
That's all over.
And we can't take the community and take it back the way it was in year 2000 and keep it that small. Some people just don't like the bigger tourist community. It is what it is. But there's a lot of good stuff in there that I think we need to go through and reach out. There's some information in there that some of the public is not aware of. One of them is, one of the folks indicated that they were wanting to know what we could do about extending the Parkway past Harley-Davis. Well, guess what? We took care of it for you. You know, it's done. You know, we're moving forward on it. On the downside of it, somebody put in there, and again, I just cursed it, somebody put in there they're having a problem with dirty water. Please, if you're out there, if you're listening in, if you hear me, please let us know that. We're not proud of it, but it, things like that do happen in a system like we have, and we'd be happy, I'm speaking on behalf of our, Zach and his people, I know we would be happy to talk to you and see if it's your line or our line or whatever it is. But if you've got that kind of a problem, don't sit back and say you're not going to drink the water, to heck with it. Please, reach out to us. Reach out to us on any of those problems. And I'm sure some of the things we'll find in there that we need to reach out and answer some of the questions that some of the people are asking. But it was, it looks like a lot of good valuable information. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Alderman Borella.
I attended the elected officials' training today with Tara, and just wanted to give kudos to Gina on the budget presentation and that she represented City very well.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Alderman Hoffman.
Okay, a couple of quick things. I just wanted to welcome Kerry Patterson back to town. Looked like you had a great trip. I don't think I've ever...
We're back in our small, old, little, no-trapping...
But I was following you on Facebook, and it sure looked like you were having a good time. So welcome back and congratulations. Eric, we talked briefly a couple of days ago about the sidewalk. Did you happen to look into that for me? Do you mind?
So you asked about the sidewalk for Jose Beach Road?
Yes, and where it's going and why.
Correct. So basically, between Goodfellow and the dance studio, it's on the south side of the road. That's mainly to serve the library, which is on that side of the road. And then after that, it crosses to the north side, and that stays that way all the way to the Parkway. That is due to the challenges of crossing the driveway there and maintaining an ADA-compliant sidewalk. It's very steep.
So if you turn down the road and you go down, it starts on your right-hand side?
Correct.
And then when you basically reach the houses, it moves over to the left?
When you reach the dance studio, it moves over to the left.
It's a dance studio.
And then it remains that way for the rest of the way down.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And you said the reasoning was the traffic flow or...
The library's on that side, so it provides people a chance to get there without illegally crossing the street.
My, I guess my question is, why can't it stay on that side of the road all the way down? Because the other side, once you get past the dance studio, that's where all the houses are that are pretty close to the road. That's what I'm wondering about.
I'm confused where you're...
So if you turn down the road, the library's on the right, correct?
No, library's on the left.
It's on the left.
Okay. So it goes there, next to, is that Miller, Miller's building is right there, too?
It's across the street from Miller's.
It's across the street from Miller's. So it goes down that side, then it switches over, kind of up the hill?
Yes.
And then that's where, but all, there's houses all down that side, correct?
There's houses on both sides.
On both sides?
Yes.
Okay. It just seems to me when I drive down that road that these houses are really close to the road, and the other side, they're not. That's what some of the constituents have brought up. So I was just curious if, can it go on the other side? If homeowners are complaining, that's, is there an engineering reason it couldn't be on that side?
Not through that section. We're raising the curb, adding curb and gutter is going to raise six inches. That other side of the road does fall off a little. If you add six inches, add a six-foot sidewalk, and then try to catch grade it.
So in your opinion, it's better on that side?
It looks better when you're out in the field that way, yes.
Okay, that's good enough. I'm sorry to have such a long question, but...
Take on to that conversation.
Yeah, me, too.
Do you mind if I could take on to that?
Alderman Ross.
So a couple of things. One, is it safer to have it cross the street? It seems odd to me to, for the sidewalk to cross in the middle of the street like that. Is it safer that way?
They, so there will be a push button there, which will have flashing for people crossing that will inform people.
And so why wouldn't we put that at the intersection instead of half, you know, not halfway, but 300 yards down the road?
Yeah, to my understanding, the dance studio requested a crosswalk there because they park on the other side of the road.
Correct.
So we figured it would be easier to, or safer to have that crossing be there with the controlled crossing.
Okay. So then I'm going to ask some other questions. So I under, first of all, I had to get this from another engineer. So we used to have a standard around here where the board, if they chose, would get those plans and drawings sent to them. But from what I understand, there's one driveway across all of these properties that are being affected for driveway entrances that is a nice radius curve, okay? And the rest are much more square. Would you assess that that way?
Yeah, that's, I believe so.
Can you tell me why the one is and why the others aren't?
I don't know if I have a great answer there for you. I believe that you're referring to up by the Parkway, that first one.
I have not got a chance to dig through all the plans, okay? Mike, this is something that we talked about the other day. So, you know, you were going to, and I realize we were going to talk about it tonight some, so now maybe this is the conversation. Sorry for taking over, guys. But it just seems odd to me that we have one type of driveway entrance in one place, and then we have another type of driveway entrance in all the other places.
I'd have to look into that.
And does this road, I'm going to make sure I say this the right way, does this road meet our design guidelines? From a width standpoint, from a traffic width standpoint?
That's the only part that I'm not sure about. I don't, I did not...
Because from what I gather, it's different than another road we're about to accept probably in the next 60 to 90 days. And I'm sure, curious why that would be also. So you...
I know pavement...
I need to get those answers.
Pavement widening is part of the project.
Pavement widening from current?
Yes, correct.
Okay, that's fine. But then we have design standards, okay? And from what I gather, this road is a little narrower than another road that we're about to take into, and we requested and required someone else to do it a different way. So this is another example. Sorry, I'm going to be on my soapbox now. I brought this up on Mace Road years ago, and I lost. It was a three to, or a four to three decision. But where we continue to put design guidelines out there and hold people accountable, and then when we go to do something, we just do something, whatever we want. And that just ain't right, as far as I'm concerned. So hopefully, I'm, it may just be one man's opinion, but it just don't seem right. And if, in fact, that's kind of the case here, then we need to talk about that. And I realize we don't all have the right information right at this moment, but it's something that we need to get flushed out.
Okay.
Okay? That's all I have. Go ahead, Kevin.
Is there a reason, or tell me how far, again, I don't have the guidelines in front of me, how far the sidewalk is going down? I had a citizen complaint, and unfortunately, it's sitting on my desk for me to do some more research on it and et cetera. But how far is the sidewalks going down the road?
So the sidewalk will go all the way to Goodfellow. That's the, like, last road intersection before kind of getting to more of the residential area.
So why isn't their sidewalks past Goodfellow?
That is where the project terminates.
That's where the project terminates?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine. That's all I needed. Like I said, I had to complain in an email. I read it this morning, and I was like, I got to do a little research, and I haven't done no research. Your research won, you've answered my question. I didn't know that. Thank you.
All right. Alderman Hoffman, do you have anything?
Yeah, I didn't mean to open a whole can of worms on you there, Eric, but obviously it's something we need to all look into a little deeper. Just real quick, Dog Park thing that we've been working on, kind of behind the scenes, is that on the agenda for next week, anything?
We've rescheduled the call.
Okay, so that's going to hold it back and, okay. And just one last thing. Good luck, Lucky Eight Television, if you narrow it down to LOZ law or low-toe law, please use LOZ.
That's it. All right. Alderman Ross.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to congratulate the gentleman in Public Works, is it Spencer? Yeah. I think it's wonderful that we compliment our employees. It certainly is a good incentive for them to like their work and like their job. Anyway, thank you for doing that. And congratulations, Mr. Hooker. I'll be anxious to meet you and to work with you. And other than that, I think that's it for right now. Thank you.
All right. Alderman Ross.
Two or three things. One, welcome, Jeff, and look forward to working with you once you get here. Secondly, congratulations to Spencer. I had a conversation with him at the Employee Appreciation Dinner. He was an impressive young man. From recognition standpoint also, I want to recognize Mitch Phillips. Every once in a while, I see and notice that there's, you know, our offenders, I think that's the appropriate name, okay, out working. And I noticed the other day they were down off of Case Road. And I know that Mitch took that on in the last year or two, and from what I gather, he's done a great job with that. And it takes a unique person to deal with that. I mean, he has to drive to Tippin three or four days a week, I assume, back and forth, and he's in a vehicle and with these folks all day long. And I realize they're very low-risk, but they're still offenders and still incarcerated. And he does a great job, from what I can tell. I've even talked to him when he's been out there in the field with them. And so just, you know, if you would, let us, let Mitch know how much we appreciate what he's doing, okay? This is another day where I have set on this bias and heard about people that have made 25 years with this organization this year. And that's just awesome, okay? And I look at it, and I, well, what happened? Well, they got a picture with the mayor or the city administrator, and they got a plaque. And that's great, but it ain't near enough, okay? And I don't know how, I'll be glad to be part of the solution, but somehow, some way, if some employee decides to stay with this organization for 25 years, I would hope that we could find some way to recognize them in a grander, if not a more compensating way than what we have done so far. That's not to say that we're not, I'm not, I appreciate what we've done. I just think that we can step our part game, and I hope that we can find a way to do so.
Second.
And lastly, since you brought the street sweeper, Kevin, we could sure use a street sweeper down on Greenwood Circus. We've got a couple of contractors down there that don't know how to clean up the road.
All right.
That's all I have. Thank you.
He does a great job.
Likely, we got this nice street sweeper. Yeah, the police come down and get it. I'm quite convinced we need it, but since we got it, let's do it.
All right, thank you, Alderman Ross. Yeah, just have a few things. Again, congratulations, kudos to Spencer. That's very good. And I also wanted to say that Zach, I appreciate you. He probably hears from me too much, and it was the 20th, I had to go back on my phone. I wasn't TikToking or anything. I was looking back on my phone. But 5:48 PM on Sunday, May 26th, if you remember, we had that storm come in. And I'm driving down Passover Road, and there's a big tree in the middle of the road. And I'm thinking, I hate to call Zach, but who do I call? I didn't know. So I gave Zach a call, and I'm so sorry to bother you on a Sunday. And, but here's the deal, and it was like two-thirds, and it was just big around across. And he said, well, get it taken care of. And I get to Kim's condo and met with some friends. I was probably there about an hour and a half, headed back to the cheese house, and it was cleaned up. So that was awesome.
Nice job.
Yeah, that was neat. Travis, IT, I got to give kudos to him here. A few weeks ago, I was on one of my little fits where I was, let's just, without getting to all of the detail, I was needing some ammunition should I need it from something that somebody had said about us on a show. And so I went down to IT, looked for Michael, and he wasn't there. And I said, hey, Travis, I said, I don't know if you can do it or not. I said, but rather than me watching the show over and over and over, writing things down, it's closed caption, is any way you can print that off for me? He goes, I don't know. 20 minutes later, he printed it off and gave it to me. So the closed caption, that whole thing, and so, just ammunition that I have should I need it. So kudos to him. Congratulations, Jeff. Look forward to working with you. And the last thing, I want to talk about my day today, not everything, not running out of gas at Backwater. But thank you, Kerry. It wasn't really out of gas. The light went on just as I pulled in. It was a luncheon meeting. And just as I pulled down the parking lot, my light went off. And of course, I parked at the bottom like this. And so as I get ready to leave, I start backing out, and it sputtered. And so I called, and Kim was having stitches taken out from rotator cuffs, or from carpal tunnel, so I called Kerry. Is there any chance you could come get me? So, thank you, Kerry.
Thanks for saving the mayor.
Yeah. But in between that, this morning, I had the opportunity, for those of you who look at Facebook, I've already made a Facebook post, that I had the opportunity to go around the oasis, and they took me on a gator to see all that they're doing. And I think I posted like 26 pictures. But what they're doing over there, and the contractors, Brinkman Contractors, I mean, they were so nice and taking me around, looking at everything they're doing, the safety standards. They've actually leased some space from the Hampton, and a lot of the stuff is already sitting up there. You know, the big containers they bring over on ships, cargo ships from Holland and Italy? They're going to have to bring in 147 containers just for the theme park. They already have, bless you.